Okay, good. All right, so open up the meeting here at 9:03. So first on the agenda is Carol's on?
Carol is on virtually and I'm not sure where to start.
All right, hey Carol.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing wonderful. So we got your, we got some things to look at here and I'm sure there's some questions. So I'll just turn the floor to you and let you do some talking and then we have questions, we'll jump in. Is that good?
Sure, sounds good. So I'm sure you had the opportunity to look at your options. And just a question, you said your renewal budget was around 3%, is that correct?
Well, that's I think, that's what we budgeted for when we did our, when we did our big plan, we were projecting cost over the years. You know, and then not knowing what the future holds, we missed that mark pretty good. But that's how we're looking at the one option of increasing the deductible amount and dealing with that. So go ahead.
Yeah, so just a suggestion, based on that, say you do want to, say you increase your deductible from the HSA 3,000 to the 3,500. You know, your annual premium's going to be so minimal, it's about $1,800 per year. Say you allocate an additional $500 for single employees and also the family employees to their HSA, to their bank accounts. Based on your current membership, that's an additional about 16,500 a year. So based on those projections, you're going to be right around that 3%.
So.
I'm just looking at the current membership that you're at right now with the 33 employees. I know that might modify a little bit come January. But based on that, that would keep you right at your budget. You know, basically if you keep it the same at that HSA, the 3,000, you're still looking at that nine and a half percent.
One thing, I think it's obvious, we go up and just then we decided at our level what we're going to do with the HSA, you know what I'm saying? I think that makes the most sense. We go, we go up and then we can decide how much more we're going to fund.
So the only thing with that is, right, so if we go, we change the deductible and then we foot the bill for any additional HSA amount, that's all township dollars for the additional HSA. Whereas if we stayed with the HSA 3,000 and the premiums, the cost went up, township pays 90% of that and employees pay 10%. So that's what we have to think about too is.
Well, 90% of nine and a half is still eight, eight and a half percent. So if you do the math that way, you're still going to come out ahead the other way, you know what I'm saying?
I think you do, yeah, I just, you know.
Yeah, because at 90% of nine and a half, you're like eight something, right? Eight point nine maybe even, eight, so that's a.
Then what's?
Eight percent, you'd be about eight percent because 10% of nine and a half is nine, 1.5, right, or nine. So from a budget standpoint, to stay as close as we can to that 3%, I think you go up. So you have a net change there, a net zero change, and then we can figure out how much we can budget to put extra in the HSA, you know what I'm saying?
You made the HSA, you did the 4,000 for families, almost everybody's on the family.
I know, right, right.
You're looking at $31,000.
A month, a year you mean?
A year, in addition, additional HSA.
So 3,000 a month, right? So it's 3,000 a month extra for us budgeted essentially, 2,800, right?
In that ballpark, sure.
2,800 a month. What's our monthly cost right now?
You're right, right now you're at about 50 grand a month for your current, your current plans. So the renewal would be about, if you stick with the 3,000, it's about 54, it's going to go up about four grand, 54,825.
So it's actually less, you're sitting 45, almost five grand, or if we put three grants, they're saving $2,000 a month by going up and putting the extra thousand in, and then a 500 for the single. Which will reduce that down a little bit.
Just worry about the year, stick with the year.
So, no, either way.
31,000 a year over on a.
Versus 60 grand.
On a $600,000 plan is like 5%.
Right. I mean, and that, aside to this right now, I think that for future, we need to, I was going to bring this up, but we'll do it right now. Is that with our forecasting, I think it's 5% here on out, we need to get rid of that 3, 3 is not realistic, really.
Well, that's what we budgeted on.
No, I know what I'm saying, saying for future though, while we're on the topic before we forget.
Well, I think that was in rough budgeting, 3% crossboard on everything.
Yeah.
And then the argument was some stuff's going to go up more than 3, some stuff's not going to go up.
So we're 2% differential where we're, where we wanted to be, which I don't think is that crazy, considering where we could have been, you know?
Well, the one question, all right, so a couple of questions, Carol. So I mean, I, I think, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think everybody's looking at increasing the deductible. So the dollar amount for the, for the township stays the same on the main plan. And then the adjustment is for the HSA, it's either increase it by 500 or 1,000. I think that's the discussion we're at, right?
Yeah, which.
Okay, so do we have to decide the HSA contribution today, or is that independent of you?
Oh, that's independent of me, yes.
So, so today we could say that we want to accept a certain plan and, and then that's good, that meets the requirement for you. And then from there, we can, we can hammer out the final numbers for the contribution to HSA.
Exactly, correct.
So does, does every, all right, so yeah, we're going to, we're going to, Josh, you're good there? We're going to agree to go to the plan on the spreadsheet that, that raised, let me bring it up in front of my computer, make sure I say this right thing here. And it's, I don't even.
35.7.
Oh, here it is, yeah. So it increases by 0.03%. So it's 3,700.
Yep, yeah.
Plan that we want, and then we have to hammer out the final contribution to the HSA. And I think that's just a little more of a discussion on our end to look at these numbers. Okay, are we good? Do we need anything else from you, Carol, or are you good?
I'm, I'm good on my end.
We already made the decision on the vision.
Yeah, we decided to go that route, right?
We decided that.
Yeah, that's all confirmed and ready to go.
Carol, I'll be available this afternoon for anything we have to sign or exchange.
Okay, sounds great.
So she sees us, she sees the side of her head as I'm looking at her face, because I guess the thing's up there, so a little awkward probably, but all right. Yeah, right.
You looking at the screen.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
I do not, I think we're all set.
Okay, are you guys good? Josh, Gabe, Mike, you good?
Yep, I'm good, I mean.
All right, then we can cash out our details later, but she can go.
All right, yeah, we're good. All right, thanks for being here, appreciate it.
All right, have a great day, Steven, everyone.
Thank you.
Eat tonight.
All right, bye bye.
Do we want to talk at all about, circle back, if we have time?
Let's circle back, because I, I want to look at those numbers real close.
Yeah, we have time.
Two options, we got time, so I want to look at those and if we get to them today, great, if not, we'll do it next meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so Mike, what do you got next?
CARES Act, we have roughly $40,000 that we need to spend between now and Friday, or we're going to give it back.
So where were we at last time? What was left hanging? There was a number of items on the table that we were discussing.
I had a question on that number. The exhaust systems for the two stations is in that number, sorry.
Yes.
What about installation for those?
No. So. We're going to have a couple of those where we don't have the labor bills in yet, you know, we could, I don't know how to encumber it.
Well, he can call somebody today and get them to give us a total and we can encumber it and then.
Some of these contractors are saying, I don't know what the labor is until we do the job.
Right. So I'm getting it, so then they look at it.
Okay, so.
It's got, so it should be here this week.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm the same, I think what he's trying to get is, can you have a guy come in and say, uh, you know, give us a window, right, and then we can just allocate that, if it goes over, we cover it. But at least we've allocated that amount before the deadline, so we can spend that money.
They need to do it in writing, but we can do that.
That's what I'm getting at, right.
I would do that. My thought is they give us a number that is, hey, we think it's going to be this for this work.
Yeah.
And then if they get into it and there is something beyond what they anticipated, then yeah, we're flexible that way, but.
The bulk, the bulk's paying for it, that's the point.
Right, because didn't they, the manufacturer thought 2,000 ish.
No, they said 11,000 for two stations though, so.
To install it?
To install it, that's, but they were also putting somebody, sending them up from West Virginia, putting them hotels.
Oh, yeah, so you get a local guy.
Less than 2,000.
That's what I was thinking, right.
So I mean, so maybe somebody, yeah, gives us a proposal for.
That's what I do, find, you have, what's today? Tell somebody they got till Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Please, thank you, it needs to be Thursday, Karen needs Friday to.
Thursday, 5:00 PM to give you a written proposal. And I would advise him, you know, we understand, and he can even put in there, this is, you know, an estimate, cost could, you know, blah, blah, blah. At least so we're on the same page, at least can allocate that money, so we know we have, you know, at least use what we can out of the CARES Act versus coming all out of our budget. Okay.
We may have that with one or two other projects, much smaller scale.
Sure.
Frank, I mean, there's, there's going to be a little variance. We'll have received 988,000 and we may kick in a couple thousand.
And if, if this can't be done, let me know. I mean, if they give us a number and they're able to do it under that, maybe they provide an additional service that is code related, so additional filters for the furnaces that are high.
Yeah. So what's your cost on, does that still leave the $12,000 then?
Forty.
No, forty, that didn't include, the 40 didn't include that, right?
Didn't include the labor.
Oh, so say four grand for that.
Okay.
Say five grand, I don't know, so we're looking at 35,000? Left ish?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The one thing, Grand River, I know, I checked with them a while back, check on them nicely.
Yeah.
While back, I checked, I checked with Grand River to see if there was anything that they wanted for their station. And they said nothing at that time, but then recently they, they asked for, if we could possibly come up with $1,000 for a system that purifies the air. They have baseboard heat, so they can't put any in the furnace, but there's a standalone air purifying system, almost like a fire that they plug in and they can, that's 900, or it's like 880 for the unit and 120 for the.
This is the one for Grand River we're talking?
Yeah, so it's going to be $1,000.
A thousand bucks, you good? I'm good.
And that's because we have, our employees are stationed there.
Right, exactly, because, yeah, because our guys, it's actually going to be in the dorm room where our guys are sleeping, yeah.
Station, most of it serves actually, okay.
Give Mike a minute to catch up before we keep rattling.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.
A phone app, you guys interested in that?
I think, I mean, I, I think it serves a purpose that we can definitely utilize for this, right, and then.
I had a great idea this weekend, yeah, do a phone app. We saw that, we could have used it as push notifications for the collection, there's other things. And so if you guys agree with that idea that I had.
I, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
What was the cost on that for the?
Well, I think there's three levels, here, let me hang in, based on a.
You should have seen him try to turn that thing off, it was funny.
Yeah, I was struggling, I couldn't get your phone turned off.
Let me bring this up real quick.
You're my best life, thank you.
Okay, we're down to 35.
Price for the app for the three years, is it like 14 grand or something?
Yes, it's full customization, there's, this isn't set, it's full customization to do.
So the three of us would have access to it.
Yeah.
If we needed or.
And we can tell them what. So one year. One year's 12,985, that includes creation, initial setup, et cetera, and one year of maintenance. Or you go. 22,9 includes setup and three years of maintenance.
So 23,000 for three years.
Yeah. And that's full maintenance support.
22?
Well, you got 12 plus 10, five grand per year for maintenance and support. And so this is something that these guys don't, if there's an issue or whatever, they don't have to do anything, we just call them and they, if we have any trouble, they fix it. Similar to like what we do with our computers, right, so.
And what do we pay for our website, web hosting, any idea?
Our web hosting per month is negligible.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, but it's.
Do we pay Nick?
Well, Nick is, Asgard is the, like, company that does it, but it's hosted on.
CMH hosts it now.
I just don't know how much, I'm just trying to get a feel for what that costs per year to maintain.
Find out.
I'm just curious, you know, because, so the, the app is what, five grand a year? So I'm, I'm just curious where, where it compares.
Well, website management, I think, is much easier, because all these, you know, websites have a basic platform, you use WordPress to create the website, and then it's really just a plug and play, but I think it's a different animal when you got to put it into the Apple Store and the Google Play Store, you know what I mean?
So is my math correct? That would leave us with like 21,000?
Correct.
It's just 5,000 more and I have to pay out a general fund going forward after the two years.
Three years.
Three years.
If we want to keep going with it, we'll see how useful it is.
You know, three years and all the way technology advances, we could be in a whole different situation by then, you know? So with as far as what it costs to maintain it, different options out there, who knows in three years where things are going to be.
Correct, it might not, I mean, that might, price might come down or.
That's what I'm getting, I think three years will give you enough to keep it going for three years with no interruption. And then after, after that three years, we can evaluate, uh, where we go from there.
Is that something we brainstorm with this app developer?
Yeah.
So we, we all can kind of.
Yeah, he would, he would either come up, because he's from out of town, I don't forget where he's from, but, like, he's come up and met with the sheriff when they set their app up.
So there will be some sort of meeting with all of us.
And they also provide like full-blown rollout, you know, marketing and development, like roll it out to the public and announcing it and creating, you know, video or, you know, those type of things. They, they help you with all of that as well to get the, the word out to the public too, so. So if we decide to do it, then I would let him know, and then he would, we would arrange for either Zoom or, you know, if he, or if he's up in the, Kevin come up in the area and face to face.
Okay. Karen's working that number, okay. So we have, if we do the app for the three years, that leaves 21,000, we were just saying. I know the Fair Board had a request at one point.
Yes, they do.
For tables.
Riverside had one also, right?
Riverside was for anything we'd like to send them. The Fairs was to specifically sponsor some tables at their community center for $1,000. And tables, I think.
Okay.
So do we want to?
I'm good for the Fair Board.
And I'm good, just helping out Riverside, I guess.
So, well, so Fair Board, are we granting them the money, are we purchasing them, are we purchasing them?
How does that work?
I think we would have to subgrant the money to them.
Because then they have to answer for it.
Yeah, and they're, and they're a nonprofit, so the method is.
Said permitted to sub to the grant.
It is, there's just an extra, can we get that done in time?
I'll figure it out.
Or can we?
Well, it just has to be encumbered, right?
Or can we purchase the tables?
It's encumbered by Friday.
So it'll be encumbered, that gives another 40 days to do whatever we got to do.
I just didn't know if it was easier for us to purchase the tables and then lend them to the Fair Board.
Well, they can ask us to lend them.
I'd say give it to them, be done and.
What they offered was, well, you can use our community center.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Josh, just give it to them, so we don't have to mess with it.
I just, there's, okay, there's, there's extra recording stuff, use some grant money out, that, I was just trying to get them. Not have to deal with that and be on the hook for that potential liability.
Worst case, you could, Mike could buy the tables, so Mike could write, so let's just say, the ABC Supply Company, instead of giving a $1,000 check as a grant to the Fair Board, Mike can just sign it, send a check to ABC Table Company for $1,000.
That's what I was, that's what I was saying.
But, but you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying, that way we don't have to grant it, you're actually purchasing them and providing them to the fair. But not, I didn't, I think what complicated was the borrowing.
The lending.
But if you, if you buy it and you give something away, aren't you exposing yourself to what you buy it for? I mean, if you subgrants, the whole purpose of subgranting, can you buy it and do that? Well, just an easy question, Jason, can you just buy it and give it to them and it covers? I mean, the whole purpose of this thing is for COVID and for social distancing and whatnot, but if we buy and give it to somebody else.
Or if you buy it and lend it to them in perpetuity.
I think it'd be cleaner to sub it.
Okay, there you go.
I mean, it might.
Let us work out the detail.
Yeah, just.
It might create a little bit of additional.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's an onerous.
And ultimately, the responsibility will still be on the township to make sure those funds are used.
Actually, we still have.
For permissible purpose.
Yeah.
But here, we know what they're doing. We know what they're doing, they're, they qualify as a nonprofit. Paywork would say, hey, we're giving you some money, this is what you have to use it.
I, I think. Had that drawing and.
This is not that hard.
That's four grand, remember we got that, that's not in there. I, I forgot, we need the 4,900 that we're, we spent, that he's going to still provide all of the stuff for the add-on to station two. We had that work done, so we needed, that's 4,900 bucks, that'll come out of that, I'll get you the invoice.
We, we have to have.
I'll have him send that over, I'll email him as soon as we're done.
Tell him if he doesn't get it over by.
And then whatever's left, I'd say, when I get Riverside.
Sure. He said 4,900 for.
These drawings and whatever, the technical specs for the addition to station two for social distancing that we didn't have time to get done because of the deadline, but we still had the cost of.
If, if he could give me that invoice today, I'd really appreciate it tomorrow.
Tell him that.
I will, yeah, he will, yeah, he said it. So then whatever's left, when you.
Is there anything else we can?
The only thing I saw that, you know, now I, I keep seeing him as those lights that you could put in a room like this when you're done. And you leave it on for like 12 hours and it sends a, you know, those, just set it on the table, let's say, and it sends that UV out that kills all the germs on all the surfaces, you like leave it in the room, you like leave for the night and plug it in, and then when you come in in the morning, you turn it off, and it runs for that, how many ever hours, and disinfects everything within like, you know, 20 feet of the UV.
I don't care about that, I do want you to know, we do have an air filtration system we're installing.
Right, that's the, the air, but I'm just saying for the surfaces, something, and that's portable, so we can take it anywhere. You could use it in any room, if they had something, if they have, fire station had a guy, they could take it there and plug it in in that room, and you know what I'm saying?
How much are those?
Uh, I'll, as soon as we're done, I'll look it up and.
Buy a couple of them.
That's what I'm saying, right. So we'll do that.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, let me, uh.
I mean, it might not be a bad thing to have here.
Right.
And at each station, really, in.
All right, let me.
You know, they, especially at the fire station, they could, when they change shifts, they could drop it in the sleeping area, run it.
That's what I was getting at, right.
And then at some point, they could drop it in the, the day room.
So buy one for each building, that's five.
Yeah, and I, yeah, you found one there's. Yeah, there's, the one I saw was pretty big and it had like a 20-foot radius, so you could like stick it in the middle of the room and it covers like a whole room.
So say that's about 50, say they're about 1,500 bucks.
So we have three stations, town hall, road department, so five of them. So 7,500, then the rest go to Riverside.
And that leaves about 10,000.
How much did we allocate for the app?
We're 22,9.
Okay.
22,975, I'll forward it to you right now, Mike.
Okay, all righty. How about if we do all this and at the next meeting, we'll be able to tell you to the penny what's left and we can figure out how we want to give that to Riverside. It'd be, we'll have to do it by Friday, but we can have the discussion, because there should be something that you can give it to them in a good way.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, so like included in that price too is like, let's say, for instance, we want the CDC's updates automatically fed to the app. They'll integrate all of that into the app, anything the fire department wants to do, they can set up web-based platforms for them to update and send out notifications or update their part. So everybody, road service department will have their own, so they can go in and add, you know, if they're out and they're like a, you know, pipe breaks or tree down, you guys can instantly push that notification out. Right, or if the, you know, fire department is, there was, you know, we've went to this play, or this, there was an outbreak of, you know, COVID at this place, and they, fire department can push that notification out to people, you know, that kind of thing, so.
In the spreadsheet, I've noticed, so when we, when the fire department, after cover shifts, there are people that take comp time, but we are able to pay that, is that how that line item works?
We're able to encumber it.
Okay.
So we don't have to hand the cash out. We will by December 30th, we have to spend the money by December 30th, we have to encumber it by this Friday.
So my question is, the, the guys that have taken comp time for covering COVID ships.
Karen has got a PO for that, so it has encumbered.
So has, so we're covered?
We're covered.
Spent, it's been everything.
And they know they have to make a decision by the end of the year whether they want cash or how, how we're paying it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's covered. Last chance, anything else?
Could we, could we buy like some of those mobile hand sanitizing stations for, at our township events for in the future?
That's a good, that's good too. Do we have one out here? Yeah, I mean.
Just these bottles.
The one to stand, you stick your hand, they're automatic, you know, push the foam out. That's a good idea, have it at the entrance of every, or at the events too.
Party, you know, when they're decorating cookies here, you got to wash your, go to the sanitizing station.
And now, and immediately, somebody comes in, they could have it at the front door, they, you know.
Even at all the building, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, any entrance, right?
Now, where you find those?
Uh, they're everywhere, they're easy to find. But I think you might, may want to look somewhere like Cintas, right? Because then we know where we can get the sanitizer that fits, because if you order my line, then it's a pain in the butt to get the findings to refill that fits. Where Cintas, you know they're going to be able to supply the sanitizer that fits.
Cintas, if that guy comes in once a week, we have that medical supply kit, he fills all that stuff up.
Mike, I mean, I don't know how often, it sounds like a hard time getting hold with Gary Black, though, but I know the school, they have some very nice ones that have, they've got their, the Beaver logo on, like on the stand, there's like, so there's the post with the hand dispenser and then.
I've seen a ton of advertising, people try to sell them to me in my business all the time, it has just like an eight and a half by 11 thing that you can slide in, so you could put whatever you want in there.
I think these weren't, I think it was actually printed on there, but.
I like the idea.
I guess you slide it in for different.
That's what I'm saying, right, yeah.
What are you talking about?
See if Cintas has the ones that have the, like, the ones that I've seen advertised is the automatic station, and then it has a thing above it that you could, eight and a half by 11 that frames, so you can take out and put different advertisement messages, et cetera, in those, you know.
Okay. And I guess then we would be subgranting money to the high school, is that, or to the, the school district?
Because we're not buying a particular, I am.
Correct.
They're looking for, somebody ask them what they're going to use it for and tell you, but, no, we'd have to be subgranted, yes.
Are they going to have time to do it?
We have to encumber it by Friday and figure out how to do it by December 30th.
So I guess they have to.
I do, I have to figure out how to subgrant the money to them. I don't think this is hard, right? I, I really think the subgranting process is simpler than we.
And, and subgranting meets the deadline of whatever it is.
Oh, yeah, it's, as long as it's to a nonprofit, a school qualifies as a nonprofit, yes, absolutely.
So I, and I guess that was, that's where I was going next, do they have enough time? Or have they already spent so much money that they've exhausted any funds they have received? Yeah.
I don't, the schools don't get any, did they?
I thought the schools got some money.
I thought the problem was, the big deal was schools did not get any money. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that was a big deal, I might be mistaken, but.
Well, they have to decide what they're spending it on. I have to figure out how to give it to them by December 30th.
Well, if they haven't already gotten money, I'm sure they have a list of expenses that, they buy all those dividers for the kids and, right, masks and whatnot, so.
Right, and I mean, just one thing to keep in mind with the subgrants, ultimately, it's still going to be the township who would, who would get in trouble if it was spent improperly.
So they have to make sure they're spending it on.
So we have some, some oversight responsibilities, just to make sure. I know, I haven't reviewed it myself, but subgranting hasn't really come up, but I know there's lots of resources available and here's how you do it.
Yeah.
The responsibilities are, I don't think it is difficult, just want to bring that up, so we can't just say, here you go Riverside, do whatever you want.
It's got to be COVID related.
We can send reporting back, hey, this is what we did.
So maybe, maybe, I think if you guys agree, anything they spend on or proposed. So maybe, I think if you guys agree, anything they spend on or proposed gets approved by him to make sure that it's a good expense. Is that safe for us?
Sure. I think they want the money, put the stipulation.
They've already spent enough money on, they've spent so much money on.
But I'm getting it, but we have to know what, so any expense that they say, oh, we're gonna apply it to this, have him say, yes, that's good, and then we'll have, send over your proof that you bought it, you know, that kind of thing, right?
Okay. So I guess, talk to Gary on that one?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
And I guess, let him know that, don't make it public at this point.
Right, yeah, yeah, we're not.
We will make an announcement later at some point, I guess.
Yeah, I think Mike can do a press release, send it to the news herald. That might be the best way.
Because we can nail down that amount. Well, that amount's gotta be nailed down this week, right?
It will be. It will be nailed down this month.
So, so any overtime from COVID-related stuff for the fire department or department after this week is no longer COVID.
I think we've encumbered some money anticipating that.
Okay.
Just through the end of the year.
Okay, right.
We can't spend any money for twenty twenty one.
I mean, obviously, that might be a good idea to have that money, and then if we end up losing a thousand bucks or something because we had it encumbered and expend the overtime, then so be it.
That's probably gonna happen. I mean, to come to the penny, right now, when we're projecting and not all the work's done, there's gonna be a little variance there. But I think, I think we're good.
All right, we go with that, gentlemen?
Yep, sounds good.
Josh, move on.
I'm good with that.
Mike? Move next.
Next is, Gabe wanted us to bring up a children's Christmas drive-through.
Do we want to do something? I mean, some other, somebody else made the suggestion that they had the fire, instead of, kinda like Grand River does, but have, people could sign up, like, we could have them sign up streetwise, right? And we could have the streets that sign up have our fire truck drive-through with Santa on the fire truck, waving at the kids and.
It's a big township, dude.
Well, I understand, but not, doesn't have to be on one day. I mean, how many people you think are really gonna, I mean.
How many streets you think are gonna sign up?
That's what I mean. What are you gonna get? I mean, realistically speaking, we have three stations. I mean, do you think it would be that big of a, I mean, I know Grand River sends their truck out and Santa delivers presents, but that's excessive and they're smaller, but we also have, well, really, four stations, if we did it over a period of time.
So we've, we've got a reserve engine, right? So we've got a spare engine we could use.
For Santa Claus's.
Well, we arrange one and do it different days.
There's only one Santa Claus.
You know, you don't necessarily have to be the same day, or like I said, we just get one Santa Claus, have a drive-through, they come through, they can wave at Santa, we have the Santa, letters to Santa box, they can, letter we could put in there, Santa can wave at them and, and a candy cane, I mean. Do it for an hour or something, you know, or two hours, like they did for trick-or-treating.
Sounds more realistic. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you start going three, if you start going multiple stations on multiple days, that becomes a full-time job.
Yeah, that's, it is.
And then you get kids going around, they wanna talk to Santa and Santa can't just blow off.
Plus, the residents need to be able to count on when it's coming.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Three or four different dates.
I know years ago, we used to take Santa to the shopping center. That was a long time ago.
But then that forces everybody to come in a crowd, blah, 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 yeah.
Driving, to drive around the township, how do you give, you know, if I want, my kids wanna go out and see it, you got no idea when it's coming.
Right.
Other than, hey, it's this Saturday. It could be anytime, and I guess you could, lights and sirens like crazy and you'd hear it coming, but.
Yeah, that's true.
So otherwise, you do what? You do at the fire station where they drive through?
Or we could almost set it up at the metro parks where we normally have it, because they could come down Hardy, come in that long entrance, so we could set, just by the, like, yeah, they could just loop and then loop right out and just be, send them through and wave at Santa, drop your letter off and, you know, buy a couple, you know, a bunch of boxes of candy canes and a candy cane and be done.
Pass out candy cane, or do you want to pass something out?
Well, I mean, they, so all the, the communities that did the trick-or-treat, they gave the kids a treat in a bag, a bag of treats, you know, like an individual bag.
I'm just, good with COVID.
That was October, this is.
Yeah, I mean, if you got gloves on, I mean, you know, somebody wears gloves and hands them in a box and I don't see what.
I don't see the issue, buy a bunch of candy canes and pass them out.
I think if you take them right out of the box and whoever, we could take turns handing them out, I'll help, we can hand them out, we have a glove on, you know, whatever, so it's not, you're not touching anything except the candy canes.
So in that case, really the only expense is.
Candy canes and Santa.
Santa, candy canes.
And we might be able to see if, we could work it out where Buck, is he still doing it?
Oh, yeah.
See, Buck, what we could do with Buck, we got one guy, you know, Buck's Santa's helper, so he could, if he's free that day, we could have him come down and just pay him, because he does it side gigs, he's, he does like Giant Eagle and stuff in Madison and all that.
I know he's, he's pretty well freed up for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, right.
Got canceled, so.
So we could just do it that way, and that is his sub business, has nothing to do with his being, you know, or if we just. Or we just pay him through, you know, as he's working for the township that day. I mean, either way, however we do it, we give him cash or we pay him, whatever. That's what I mean, six and one half done the other, right?
We talked to him about it today?
Yeah.
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 And are we still thinking December twelfth then?
I don't know.
That's a Saturday.
December fifth, what, because that's our lead pickup. So that'd just be.
That's what we had talked last meeting, something I wrote down.
Oh, that's lead pickup day? Oh, okay, yeah. So the twelfth. I have in my calendar, it's the Christmas party, so.
Just do like. Twelve to two.
Yeah, I mean, just, I would think.
Two, two hours is.
I think two hours is more than enough.
Yeah, me too, but is an hour not enough?
Here's what's gonna happen. You're gonna say twelve, and if it's like anything else, it'll be there eleven thirty, right? So I think twelve to two would be more than enough.
And go, go to the park down there and they just do a big loop.
Yeah.
Come in the bottom of your boat and they drive out by the ball field.
Yep.
Okay.
You'd have to coordinate the guests with the metro parks.
I mean, and I think, and I don't.
Detail.
Hey, we're gonna be outside, really. We just need to go, in case we need a little bathroom, have it open for the bathroom, but.
We could drive right to the service garage.
That was the other option.
And they could pull in off Hardy Road, right through door two, right out door one, back on the third port nurse.
I don't know, do we open our?
Well, I was gonna say, out through the brush drop.
Well, yeah, they could even go that way. Come in post road.
Either come in post road or come in between the fire station and service garage.
That's fine. I don't want them driving through the building. I would need somebody to lose control and take out a vehicle or a wall and then.
What are you suggesting, John?
I would say they could come through the building, but they could come down, like Josh said, down post road, back through by the salt dome and back out between the fire station.
Like we do for the, like we do for shredding.
Snowstorm that day.
That's true. If that's, if it's wet or muddy, that would be a nightmare down there, right?
What's wrong? Just use, it's all paved. If you go down.
Night, that's what I say. Now, if there's.
At our building, it makes it more of our event. That's all I was thinking. Hey, this is a, this is the painful township event. It is not something hosted by the metro parks. You do it there. That was my only thought.
The only thing you could do is, we could set up, they could come around like we do for shredding, come down post through, and then we could set up on the concrete by door, the first door that's closest to Hardy, we could set up right on that driveway there. They could come around, we could hit them right as they're exiting, boom, they go, and they go right out, you know?
Santa Claus needed a break.
Yeah, they're right there. We don't have to arrange anything with the metro parks.
No breaks.
Santa gets no break.
We keep it pretty well cleaned up in the back there anyway. I like the.
I think that works.
At our building.
I mean, I get what you're saying, but we won't, just driving through there, I think it will be. Doesn't get terrible, does it, when it gets?
No, we got grindings back there. We can spread some grindings out before that happens or it's not gonna be as.
Okay.
Dirty out of cars if it does.
Yeah, and then I'll just, I'll just take like a Google Maps aerial and I'll draw like a little map and post it on it so people know where it's at and that kind of thing.
You guys can give them a car wash on the way out?
Fill their gas tank up.
Hold the date again?
December twelfth, twelve to two.
See, I see if Buck's available.
See if Buck's available. Because the other Santa, the other Santas we've used and other Santa helpers that have come in the past were well-suited for sitting. But I don't know if two hours standing is, would, but we know Buck does that every day, so he can handle it, you know? Yeah. Give them this, give them this, give them the slow stop sign and that's for the traffic control.
So how close is he gonna come to the vehicles and what's, what were you?
Well, here's what we do is, does, I think, we can specifics, but is he just gonna wave and then, you know, I don't care, we can all take shifts volunteering and handing him out and he just stands there and waves, or does he the one says, oh, 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 and hands him a candy cane, you know?
Put a microphone on him where his voice can boom do a speaker? We have anything like that available already?
Well, we have our speakers. Yeah.
Do we have the portable microphone that'll transmit to them?
We can get one, those are minimal.
I don't know, but those are cheap.
Yeah.
Get one then, all right.
Why do we need that?
Well, so he can talk to people and they can hear him from a, whatever the distance is, folks can hear him. I think it'd be kinda neat.
You gotta be a distance from him?
Well, he can't, that way, Santa.
Buy it with COVID money.
Because otherwise, otherwise Santa would have to wear a mask. This way Santa can stand off the side and talk, and if we're gonna hand out the candy, we'll wear the gloves and.
Yes, no, microphone, no?
I think we'd be stretching reasonably necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't buy the COVID money. It's a small expense, so you're.
Yeah, we're really talking twenty, thirty bucks.
Yeah, and I think, and in two hours, if we, if you guys are willing, we split it up. What's that, forty minutes apiece, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can help.
We can all, you know, help and Santa can stand aside. That way Santa doesn't have to cover his beard and he can, you know.
While we're on this subject, let me just tell you a little story we did years ago. When I lived in Tennessee, the local phone company did this, and it was a tradition every year, and they would have Santa Claus set up, in front, they built this, they built this little Santa hut, right on the front of where the phone company was. And, and everybody knew the gig, and they'd bring their kids up and they would get the kids in line. Santa had a, had a receiver on and he, so people would be in a car and the parents would go up to the car, one of the parents would go to the car and the other one would go get the kid in line and they'd say, you know, this is Johnny coming up here. So as little Johnny walked up, Santa Claus would say, Johnny, he'd know, he'd know him by name. He'd get up there and he'd talk to him and the parents would give him all the information, you know, he's been a good boy, this is what he does, this is what he wants. Anyhow, it was a real cool gig. This thing, this thing was a tradition down in Millington, Tennessee, and it was huge. People came all the time and they would do it like at six PM, right after dark till like seven or eight o'clock, a couple nights a week, but it was a big thing leading up, so. And then we can't do it this year, but down the road, this is really kind of a neat thing, if it's something you guys want to consider doing, I think it'd be a nice little thing for our township to take on.
Yeah, or we incorporate. We can.
Well, technology has changed, so there's things that we can do, right?
Even for our Christmas party, saying, we can have a form you fill out and we, you know, give them, so when they come in, they have a number and we know that, all right, this is blah, 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 or whatever, and Santa has it in front of them too, when they come sit and take a picture with them.
What was cool about the one here is, is he had a little earpiece in, and so as, as the little kid's walking up, somebody's talking to Santa Claus on a receiver. And they're saying, Johnny's coming up to you, and then, Johnny, how are you?
So we could do that, parents could fill the form out or whatever, we could just sit at a table over there and get a little thing and Santa, this is, this is.
This is what Johnny wants.
This is Josh.
So as, as he's talking to little Johnny, he's got somebody talking in his ear at the same time.
Yeah.
And he knows that the conversation goes and then, you know, pick up your room. Okay, I heard you're not cleaning your room.
Yeah, we can look at it for next year. I like it, all right.
It was kinda cool.
Yeah, that's fun.
We set up, this year, set up by one of the garage doors on the, the drive that goes into the garage, if the weather's not horrendous, we throw up the township tent.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, we're.
The township logo one.
Yep, yeah, we'll put that one up.
Not that it's gonna do much, but other than visual, so.
Get a propane heater out there.
We have one.
That's what I'm saying, set that up if it's cold.
Thing with the, we don't have that style, but we have one that.
Works, okay, okay.
Do we have sides for our tent? Do we ever buy sides?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the twelfth, we'll look at that. That's tentative, let's make sure Buck's good that day.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Just, I mean, do you? Well, I know, I'm saying, while we're here for the next two hours, can you, you step out and call him and see if he, okay. Okay, next.
Chuck wanted to talk about placing a deer sign on Boha Road.
All right, so right when you come up between Dufton and you have all those woods now on both sides, and then you go all the way down the railroad tracks, especially during the rut, I even had it to me, people, or somebody asked, they said, can we put a deer sign up? My first thought was, well, here goes another conversation with Josh. So, so I actually reached out to Josh and I said, look, this is what somebody asked, you know, I know what you're gonna say, I just thought I'd run it past you, and he goes, well, actually, in this situation, so let me turn it over here to the sign man.
Number one, yeah. Number one, it's not our road, so we can't put a sign up. So it would be a request to the county engineer's office to put a sign up. But in this case, this is a, something that could cause harm to a motorist, unlike the goose crossing sign, you know, that you hit the goose, the goose is gone.
Cooked goose.
The car and the driver are fine. In this case, there could be a danger and knowing the surroundings there, this wooded, legitimate concern.
So living there, it actually happens. It happened to me a week before last, especially during the rut season, but.
So I don't have any problem asking the county.
Which, which shocked me, which shocked me. I was totally taken aback.
I mean, I'm with Josh, the fact that most signs virtually do nothing, but they do give people in the neighborhood or whatever comfort that they're there, but, you know. I couldn't tell you if there's a deer sign on eighty-four and I had to stop for three of them the other night, and I don't, I couldn't tell you if there's a sign on this street or not, but, you know.
But if there is deer activity there and.
Yeah. I, yeah, whatever. I'm sure the county will likely say no, but, don't you think, or?
I don't know.
Maybe they'll give us a surprise moment like Josh did with maybe.
Yeah, that's true. What's if they say that they won't put one up? Can we say, can we put one up?
Yes, ask them. All they can say is no. Just ask, all they can say.
If they say they're not gonna provide it, say, do you care if we put one up?
And if they say no, then it's a done deal.
Yeah.
It's what it is. See, Josh, you got more than you bargained for.
Yeah, I like that idea.
What do you mean, you don't know if you like that?
What's the difference?
What's the difference? If they say no, you shouldn't put it up.
Not shouldn't, just say, we're not gonna pay to put one up, and we say, do you care if we put one up?
I guess the issue is, hang and put it up. Sure, that, if they don't want, if, if they think it's an okay idea but just don't wanna pay for it, sure.
That's what they say, it's not required, so no, we're not gonna put one up. Mike can say, do you care if we put one up? If they say no, if you're gonna pay for it, go ahead, you know?
If they say, we don't want one on our road, then that's another story.
That's another story, but they just say, we're not gonna do that, it's not required, it's not something.
We've met the obligation. Okay, next, Mike. Plucking officers for twenty twenty one.
Yes, indeed. Okay, we'll do that at the next meet, at the December fifteenth meeting. This is to give you an opportunity to start thinking about it.
Josh is president. What do you want to be?
Be vice.
I'll be vice, you can stay right at the financial, okay.
Who's vice president?
Chuck. Speaking of the county, I believe our letter about Carvo made its way to the county and made its way to the highway engineer who does our road paving plans.
And does it?
Yes. Do we, do you know, was Concord sending something similar?
The day I wrote the letter, I talked to Andy, they would like to, but they hadn't tackled it. They're just as upset as we are, they plan it, but I don't know when they're.
Why were you snickering when you said that? As of Concord? No, but it made its way to the. Oh, because I got a few texts yesterday from Ted. Did he have an issue with that? He said, I, I got, what'd he say? I got the letter from Mike that you helped write. It's no slight on him, it's a slight on Carvo. Oh, absolutely, and he said, he's like, I agree with some of the things, but not every, everything was pointed out. He said, he said the quality wasn't, overall, the quality wasn't terrible.
Did we say it was terrible?
We said, we didn't say terrible, what'd we say?
Unacceptable.
Unacceptable quality. So there was a few items that were unacceptable. Okay. But, yeah. All right, all good. It wasn't a slight on him.
No.
That's what it is. Okay, Mike, do you have anything that's not listed here?
Nope.
So we're ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to fire chief. Chief, come on up here and talk to us. Please.
I really, excuse me, really don't have that much. We just are getting really busy transporting the COVID patients as, as you're watching TV and those numbers are going up even locally, we're having a lot more. We had, I get notifications from the health department too, like how many people, you know, in what areas, people that we have COVID patients. I was getting those daily. We'd only get a couple at most for the first couple of months, and now I'm getting them in seven or eight people at a time. I think Friday was fifteen, so, you know, numbers are going up, that's the nation, but going up greatly. Anyway, so last week on Wednesday, the hospital actually closed for a little while, Tri Point West, so we had to transport people up to Madison and there's on a jog, I guess, there was more and more people that had bigger problems in Madison than annual, or even go to Hillcrest, but anyways, the fact is, it's like all the hospitals now, I'm getting daily. bigger problems in Madison than annual, or even go to Hillcrest, but anyways, the fact is, it's like all the hospitals now, I'm getting daily updates on how many people are at the hospitals. Kinda keep track of that, so it's not a surprise to us, but hospitals, they're filling up also.
Did you say Madison is a hospital?
Yes.
They do?
They have an emergency room.
Oh, is that the one kinda by Classic there on twenty?
It is an emergency room that we can't transport, people can stay there, but for minor stuff, we can transport there if somebody gets stitches or.
So it's like an emergency, one of those urgent care?
Yeah, it's like urgent care, but they, it's a little bit.
But they are certified emergency room.
Oh, ER, full ER, okay, I never knew that. I just assumed it was an urgent care, but, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, we can transport there legally.
Yeah, I talked to Dino, uh, at the hospital and he was saying, part of the problem too is that, just say a guy comes in from a car accident, they have to test everybody and if they test him and he's positive, may not be necessarily sick, but he's positive, they still have to follow the same protocol, isolation, blah, 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 which puts even bigger strain on added into like taking care of sick patients, you have the ones that are there just with it, but because of the protocol, they have to be isolated, they require, you know, so it puts even bigger strain on the people that actually need the care because of.
Well, that was the thing, uh, it happened Wednesday, it was like a perfect storm, they had people coming in, they were COVID positive, they have to put them in the COVID ward.
Right.
Basically, and so they were waiting to get those beds ready, but they had to hold them in the ER, so they can't really do anything with them.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, right, they gotta sit in the ER, right.
And at that time, we transported a bunch of people up there and so did everybody else, I think, uh, Concord took a full arrest in, paid a thirty, took a full arrest in, so. There was a lot of bad things happening all at once, so.
Is that something, I guess, I guess for us, that's still the closest emergency room?
Right, and we're gonna go to the closest emergency room.
Okay.
Ninety percent of the time.
Okay, so it's not like we can, depending on what the situation is, we wouldn't go out to Madison?
We do occasionally, especially from the Perry line when we're out that way, if we're, we're up on that area, sometimes it's quicker just to head down twenty, drop off the vans and come back. So our, our station two and three will, from that area, will transport about twenty and that kind of stuff, but not very often that we go to Madison. We do go to, um, West quite a bit, but that's Cuyahoga Pacers, cause that's the only place that really has, they have the CAT scan and, or excuse me, the CAT lab that they get people in right away and do the right information for that, so that's what we did. Anyway, just to let you guys know that, you know, that's, that's happening, we're keeping an eye on it, we're doing the best we can with it, but we may be having some land, longer transports at times too, that's all.
How can they just shut down the hospital, that's crazy.
Well, they, you know what, they, they can't actually legally, um, it's kind of interesting, they can request diversions and that's what they do. Um, they request that if we're bringing something in, if it's not life threatening, we take them somewhere else.
What was the logic behind that?
We gotta go to the closest house where we still, we still will.
Real emergency, so like they would say, probably wrong, guy with a broken leg, it's not an emergency, they'd say divert that, take him to somewhere else.
Yeah, if it's not life threatening.
Right.
We'll take them further out.
Because they're already nearing capacity or at capacity.
Or they wanna like, yeah, or they wanna keep it.
At capacity, they're treating, when they get to this point, they're treating people in hallways and things like that, so it's like, there really is no room at the end, you know?
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, and they, and they can't legally do that because if you walked into that emergency room with chest pain or a heart attack, they're gonna take care of you, they can't turn you away and say, go somewhere else, so they're gonna take care of you. And so legally, they can't close the hospital, but they, they can become overwhelmed to where they just, you know, they'll get you in the door, but, you know, the doctor may not see you for a half hour because you're busy over here doing something, you know? And that, that's the situation we're kinda getting into in the hospitals right now, uh, since Wednesday, they went to diversion. Right now, I'm getting daily updates of how many people they have and they, they're really, really full of, especially COVID patients right now, so.
Just so, I know the big thing though is the ICU on the COVIDs, is that, uh, do you know any information on that with their hospitals?
Yeah, they sent, I get the information on that too, just to kind of know, um, ICOS, ICUs right now still have capacity, so, that's right now. They, the hospitals, uh, they've expanded their COVID wards now, so they, you know, they've upped their capacity. I know most of the hospitals have shut down a lot of their.
Elective stuff.
Elective stuff, um, Lake hospitals, they closed Chardon completely, they had a, a urgent care in Chardon and they had occupational services, that kind of stuff in Chardon, they closed that facility, moved all those nurses and doctors into, you know, the other hospitals. And I think you'll see more of that as this, this comes up, there'll be less elective stuff, more things closing down to get the staff into those hospitals. My wife works at the hospital, I know that she's, her department, it's a small department, but they have, you know, they have COVID people out with COVID right now, so it's.
It's just like the schools, you know, the biggest struggle for the schools is that they, nurse one has it, but nurse two worked with her. So nurse two might not have it, but she can't be coming in for protocols because.
Well, actually we are now.
Are you now?
Yeah, that all changed, um, they're sending people to work, you monitor symptoms, very symptomatic, come to work with a mask.
Oh, okay, so you got the, okay.
But they did change that, yeah, we're not isolating anymore.
So if you, so if they have it, but they're asymptomatic?
No, no, if they have it, they stay home.
Okay.
I have it, you came in contact with me, you have no symptoms, you tested negative, you still come in, okay.
Just like I said, I know, um, but in the one that my wife works at, it's a very small department and three people in that department all got it. And basically, everyone else still had to keep coming to work with a mask on, so same with our guys, we had a couple guys that I, our, that our guys that came into work and they ended up having COVID, they were, everybody they worked with was exposed. And when this first started, we would have to isolate all those people for fourteen days, well, they changed that now for healthcare, well, now it's actually for all essential workers.
That's right, I did read that.
Work with a mask.
I'll send you the link, there's a link from the state site that you can follow that shows you up to date every day. And it shows hospital capacity and, uh, and it shows you ICU capacity and what's, how much of it's left, how much is COVID. I'll send that link to you so you can kinda monitor, they update it every day, so.
Then the other thing is the, the, um, nursing homes, there's been a break, outbreak in almost every nursing home.
That's the biggest problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, right.
And, uh, but knock on wood, our system is pretty good over here, so we've not had any, any outbreaks so far at Lake Met, we've been okay there.
From what I understand, these outbreaks happen and then you'll have multiple patients from these nursing homes that have to go to the hospital and then they get a big.
And, and we're trying to change that too, one of the things they're trying to do is get those people, because those are all under doctors' care in the nursing.
Anyway, right.
So they're trying to get them to establish COVID wards in the nursing homes to take care of them like that.
That would leave, that would help alleviate quite a bit from hospitals then, right?
Yes.
That's good.
That, that's one of the things that they're working on and I know that, that actually the governor's got some stuff going with that too, because they're, how, we're not, another reason we're finding out that a lot of these nursing homes have these contaminations is the, um, they're sending people to nursing homes and testing everybody and they're keeping them there, so. Anyway, so that's all going on, but I think, I think the biggest thing for us is just that we may have longer transports at certain times because of diversions and things like that. We just have to keep an eye on it. Um, the other thing is, a couple of things, um, I, you know, last year we did it, I, I sent out a thing, I got a letter from, uh, from the A director, Joe Buscher, asked me that we're all certified on NIMS again, um, that, that increased administrators and trustees. And I know Josh, you did yours, in fact, you did both the seven hundred and the one hundred last year. And I think Chuck, you did the one hundred or something, you, you did one of them, right? Okay, but I think you did the one, you have to do at least seven hundred.
Seven hundred is.
I gotta do another one?
No, they recommended one hundred, but the seven hundred is mandatory, so you, you did the mandatory one, I did both, Josh did both.
Josh is a high achiever.
Didn't do it?
No, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'll send you the link, you can go on and do that, just wanna bring it up again, cause that's with grants and stuff. Not that, not that the NIMS guys have ever been to our door asking for this paperwork, but it is part of the federal grants, they, they, they say you have to have it. So if we ever do get an audit, they may ask for that.
How often do you have to do it?
Do it once, just do it once.
So I vaguely recall doing this, but you're sure I completed it?
I'm not sure you completed, I remember.
I feel like I, it's familiar, like I.
Can you check it, see if I've done it? I remember this conversation, I remember doing something, I don't remember if I completed it or not.
I'll send the link out.
That's such an impact it had on me, you know, there was a value added.
Oh, yeah.
I swear I did this.
Drive it up, I know you guys hate it, but it's just, just so we can continue to get money, that's all.
We like getting money, so we'll do what we gotta do, it's value added.
I feel like I did this, you sure I didn't do it, right?
I'm not positive you did it, I just don't remember getting anything from you, cause I know that you would, you would die, so.
I just feel like I remember this and.
Okay.
Don't quote me, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like I logged in and had to go, you'd go through like this, is it like, uh?
It's a lot of acronyms, if you remember a million acronyms.
A lot of TLAs.
Yeah. I feel like I remember you talking about this and me getting a link and an email.
I mean, that's great.
I might not, if you check it, make sure and then let me know if I did it, but.
Alright, I'll look at it, I'll, I'll see if I can get that, I'm sure I can get it, so. Alright, um.
Let me know if I need to resend that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that, we got it again. Alright, just to kinda update our, our monitors, we got those, those came in from A G grant, we got those, uh, the guys right now. So Verizon's taking forever to, the telemetry, you know, basically a cell phone hookup and Verizon's taking a long time to activate that, but it has to be Verizon to be the one that has that, that data link, gotta do that, but still waiting on that, as soon as that gets done, we'll go rate and service. We did get a rejection or a part of prevention rant, which apparently expected anyway, but that was for investigation equipment and we didn't get that one. Save your grant, still waiting for that to be announced, it's not out yet. But go ahead.
Anything for the chief?
Yeah. I apologize if I missed it, the, the COVID squad, when, do you think that would go on service when, you know?
Actually, it's kinda in service now, but the, the only reason it's not, we're using it like when we do get the, the ones that we know are called COVID, we're sending that out. Um, we have to send that to get the opticom put in.
Okay.
Okay, and cause if they come with one, and that's the one thing that for forty-four and ninety, when we're transporting to the hospital, that's a sketchy intersection, we do wanna have that opticom in place. So we're using it sparingly right now, as soon as we get the opticom put in.
Okay.
We'll put it in service, that's the only way, and we have to send that to, it's, it's, it's very eerie, that's the, the salesman, the, the company that sold it to us will install it, they have to, when they install it, they have to program the switchboard, you know, the light switch, it has to be programmed the right way, so we have to send it.
Okay.
And we're just waiting for them to give us the okay to send it.
Okay.
Okay?
I emailed you the link for the lights, the UV stand lights to put in rooms?
Okay.
Thirty-six foot circle, up to six hundred forty-five square foot per lamp, they're two ninety-nine before shipping, so.
Two hundred ninety-nine dollars.
For, yeah, the one that I was, it's, that was a thirty-six foot circle.
Cheaper than fifteen hundred.
Yeah, a lot cheaper.
Yeah. And you can do, and they're remote controlled, so you can, and they come with the glasses, cause you gotta walk in, if, if it's on, you have to use the special glasses, but the remote, so you can set the time and different things that you, you could set a schedule for it to come on, or you could set a timer on it, you know, that type of stuff, so.
They come with spare bulbs?
I don't, probably not.
You need one per station, you said?
I mean.
You could just throw it in the back of our squad also.
Well, yeah, because they're, it looks like they're portable, based on what I sent them, so.
What would be the point of that?
Disinfectable squad.
Oh, for the squad? Well, I mean, the price of that is a hell of a lot cheaper than what he, he found, so get multiples.
Yeah, maybe get extra two per station or something like that, or three, cause we, we just budgeted fifteen hundred for one, for three hundred, you could get three or four per station to put in, you know, rooms in the squads, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
And then you could do, I mean, the road department's pretty big, so get a couple, two, three over there too.
The two lunch, the two lunch rooms?
No, 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 these are like three hundred.
Three hundred a piece, but we had budgeted fifteen hundred per, but these are actually two ninety-nine, so you can actually increase the number you get.
Okay, they're in the, like you just.
I just sent, yep.
So we're saying, how many, township hall? Could do a couple for township hall.
Yeah, one for this room, one for the meeting room.
Could do three for the road department.
Two for township hall, Mike's writing.
Two for township hall. Two for township hall.
Three for road. And then whatever you think for the fire department, per station.
What do you want, two or three per station? Chief? Chief?
Chief? You want three per station or two?
Two per station.
So, you wanna do a third per station, three?
Or one for Grand River?
Oh, yeah.
And one for Grand River? Just give it to them, yeah.
So two per, two per station, including two for Grand River, so they can have one for rooms and one for squad.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go, so that's eight, ten.
Eleven, eleven total?
Twelve total, two for us, two for, uh, road?
So you're three for road.
Oh, three for road, so that's five and then eight, so thirteen total.
Thirteen, that's what I got.
Yep.
And hopefully they come with a replacement bulb or as an option. I mean, otherwise, we're gonna be, at some point.
I'm sure you can look that up when you go there and see.
Is it a, John, do you have anything?
We don't have much. So did the lead pickup on Saturday, only completed about a third of the township, we had the lacrosse team.
Wow.
Can you share, I guess, share with them what you shared with me before the meeting on what got done when?
So we all, twenty-four loads out of, with our trucks, just off the north side of twenty. And we worked with major waste disposal.
The north side of twenty?
I'm sorry, the south side of twenty, so we did behind the shopping center, Kingsborough and everything off Fairgrounds, took nine hours.
Wow. That's amazing, or is that much?
And that didn't, that didn't get anything over here?
We didn't get, yeah.
Up between Jackson and our avenue?
Nope. And then we did Hills area, Heatherstone, Madison Avenue.
Nice those kids were that good, huh?
You know, we had twenty extra hands.
But you were saying, but between start and lunchtime with the garbage truck, you got?
We, we did Heatherstone, Madison Avenue and the Hills area, we filled up the garbage truck.
And that took all morning?
That took all morning. And then after lunch, we filled it up two more times. We got a load on a cedar glen in Park Road down here, we filled the whole garbage truck up just into five, two hours. Spent, one stop had a hundred and fifty bags of leaves as well.
Spent all day, all day yesterday doing leaves?
Yep, spent all day yesterday and better part of today.
So you done yet?
We'll finish today.
So I guess, so my thought is, yeah, while the garbage truck seems like a great idea, it is not nearly as efficient as all the kids.
Oh, yeah, you wanna have the, the lacrosse team instead of the garbage trucks going forward next year, once this is all over with.
Right, so.
And I spoke, we'd probably be more efficient at the next lead pickup with two garbage trucks, because you can get so much more in them. But the cost is twelve hundred dollars a, a truck per.
Per day.
Per day, so it'd be an additional twenty-four hundred.
Okay. So I, just, so going forward next year, I mean, I think it was a great idea to, kind of had to this year, it was a experiment with the garbage truck, but we now know that the money going to the kids and you getting their help is much more efficient.
And, and the residents like seeing that way more than the garbage truck out there, it is good for the community and people just like seeing it.
I was curious if we were gonna get any calls or complaints about why you calling leaves in a garbage truck?
One guy came out of Cedar Glen and complained about not having the kids this year, he didn't understand why and.
Tell him they couldn't do it?
Yeah.
Did he comprehend that?
No, no.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's, that's a whole again. Sunday, Sunday with the storm, we had to call Reynolds Landscaping out, tree service, they had a tree on Avery Hill, hung up over the road. They came and responded, we responded with it.
Wow, wow.
Yeah, came with the equipment.
Anybody get called in on the storm, whoever was on call?
Twice on Sunday, once with wires down on Melrose and block it off of the fire department and then for Avery Hill.
Okay, wow, yeah, a lot of trees in the township, so, I mean, it's township.
Yeah. So we figure we only have about a third of the township done on Saturday.
Yeah, we normally do get it done on Monday.
Yeah, we usually get it done in, in nine, between the eight and nine hour day, we have one open, picked up with the lacrosse.
So I guess we just got a good lesson on the value that, uh, bringing these kids in, they really do.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And actually the cost savings using them compared to the other options.
They have fifteen kids and then five adults going with them as well.
Maybe next year, give them a little extra.
Give them a little extra, you save, you still save money.
Maybe it's time to, maybe it's time to increase our.
Yeah, fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Long ago, it used to be three thousand and I don't know, the previous board reduced it to a thousand at some point before we all started.
Three thousand per collection?
Yeah, well, at that point, we only had one lead collection and they got three thousand for it.
Okay.
And then they had the brush pickup in June. And then they had the brush pickup in June, and they got money for that.
So maybe when they made it, spread it out and did multiple, they just used the same budget and then stretched it.
But, yeah, it might be.
Might be time to bump it up a little bit, knowing, knowing now what the value we get from their help, you know?
And they're really good about having the kids and.
So they go and they get all these bags and they dump them on post road, the little area, right?
Yes.
So then, from there, we gotta pick it up and take it somewhere, transport it again?
When we're on this side of town, we haul all the leaves to Hallmark next week.
Directly, the day we do pick up. Which is where?
On Blackwood Road.
Okay.
So it's a quick turnaround for us, in five minutes.
And then, on Saturday, the garbage.
Saturday, the first load of the garbage truck, they took it right to the nursery out of Perry.
But then the other two?
But the other two, then we hauled back to the road department, just to save time, so we could keep going, keep going.
So, let me see if I understand, so, we pick them up, take them off the yard, put them in a truck, take that truck to Township Hall, dump them all on the ground, then load them back into the truck?
Throughout the week.
To take them and dump them?
Yeah. Otherwise, it's just too, because of the distance.
Too much downtime.
Well, I'm just kidding, is there a, a trailer or something that they could be loaded into to save you guys time of, and labor of reloading, all that stuff?
Not that we have.
No?
Because all our trailers are on the road picking up for the day, and all our trucks are on for the day as well, too, so.
Which was why I thought the garbage truck was a great idea, they could go out and dump, but obviously that did not.
Shame you guys got to essentially do double labor. What a big, I mean, I don't, I don't know the volume of what comes in, but.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
That's what I'm getting at, like, is there a way?
You said one house at a hundred and fifty bags?
Yeah.
That's just incredible.
What's it cost?
Every house at Cedar Glen, I was telling Josh, and Josh had went through there, I mean, they were thirty, forty, fifty bags.
Yeah.
I mean.
Every stop in Cedar Glen.
The one on, uh, Fairfield, that lady, right, she had thirty, forty bags easily, right, hers. So, what did it cost us to have the garbage truck?
Twelve hundred.
One, one day?
One day.
I know, but I'm, so, how many days does it take you guys to load those off of the ground, back into a truck and take it to Hallmark?
Three days.
Three days?
So that, that's, is that one or two guys?
It's probably two, two or three guys, Hallmark.
So.
And one would be, be like the part-time seasonal guy we have.
I'm just wondering, would it, even with this, the help, right, have a garbage truck there and have them load them right in there and take them, would it save us money on the backend of labor of having them do it all down at Township Hall, I mean, at the road department, something I guess.
The problem is, is the downtime for the garbage truck to, to drive all the way out to Perry Village.
Okay.
Undo the garbage, you know, he's gotta undo these turn buckles on it and then push everything out and then, so he was going through an hour while we were on.
Oh.
So that's, that's, yeah.
So it's.
So we're just waiting then?
You got a bunch of people standing around waiting.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, you buy another truck, and that's another twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And that's just more money.
To keep them rotating out, right?
So.
So on December fifth, for the next leaf pickup, you would want to get another garbage truck, because I, we were thinking we'd be almost done on Saturday with the second garbage truck with just the guys from the road department.
I'm okay with it, under the circumstances, do what you gotta do, your budgets are reasonable.
So you say, just real quick, I'm trying, I just want to surprise Chuck on doing this, but.
He's already gonna surprise you.
We have two, we have two guys, and so, let's say, three days, all day, that's what they're doing?
Yeah.
Plus the part-timer, so really, you have three guys?
That's including the part-time guys, so, two full-time guys and a part-time guy.
So, so what's part-time, our ten, so let's call it thirty-five, or no, twenty-five bucks, right, twenty-five bucks per hour, right?
Yeah.
That's twenty-five plus ten.
No, he's, he's at eighteen or twenty.
Part-time, oh, that part-time guy?
The kids that are there.
Twenty-five plus twenty-five plus eighteen, so it's sixty-eight bucks an hour, times eight hours.
Yeah.
That's five hundred and forty-four dollars a day.
Just salary.
Just salary, times three days, so sixteen hundred bucks, so, it's, it's renting a truck essentially, okay.
You know, I wonder if they could, if that, we can make that call closer to the day.
I talked to him on Monday, on the guy for Major, and he said, you know, that week, the week before leading up to that would probably be downtime.
I'm just saying, because if we see there's not many leaves out, I mean, all.
So many people keep them inside though.
Oh, do they?
Oh, yeah. In their garage and in their shed, and then bring them out the night before.
Oh, really?
Yeah, people started taking them back in on Saturday, we were getting calls wanting to know when we were gonna pick them up, we just, we took our leaves back in at nine o'clock tonight, because you're not here, we didn't want them to get wet and blow.
And we always finish it in one day?
Yeah.
Do we have brush pickup coming up?
That's only in the spring.
No, that's the first Monday in June.
Okay, so I guess, well, I just saw a guy with huge piles of bundles at the curb, so.
I seen that.
Yeah, I was like, does he, I was like, I didn't think we had them coming up, but.
If he calls, if that was storming, then we will.
Johnny, you're asking for another vehicle for the thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good, you guys good? Yeah, I guess the idea would be.
What, you're gonna, two trucks, you're saying?
Yeah, two garbage trucks.
And have, and have them.
Just run in the whole time, right?
Directly dump somewhere, so we're not.
Okay, this side of town, they'll directly dump at Hallmark.
Yeah, that's my thought, that we, we send them somewhere to dump, that way we're not moving them twice, right, so we're paying more money for the truck. The only problem you get, though, is if you, so, the local one can go to Hallmark, but the other one's gonna be gone for an hour to Perry, so the thought was just dump it at post road, and they can move it during the week on downtime, and you're paying these guys anyhow, otherwise, you keep two of these things going.
Why? Well, we just did the math, it's, costs us about fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars to do that, where it costs twelve hundred for a truck and having it done in one day. So do you bring out an extra truck to keep it just cycling and have it done?
Three trucks?
I'm just saying, if he's.
He said, he said he could do up to three on a Saturday for us.
You do the math, it's, we'd save four hundred dollars and a lot of backbreaking labor.
Three trucks.
Yeah.
Holy cow. What about during the week, though, you're paying those guys anyhow, so you?
Well, is there other work they could be doing, is all, you know? I guess.
I like going with two trucks and seeing where that gets us, I don't know about three, I mean, and if there's some downtime?
I think two trucks, and then, once we get closer to the shop, we'll haul all this direct on this side of town, on the west side, and once we get closer to the shop, instead of having that downtime, we'll just take them right to the shop and dump them close, well, because we're right there, Lake Erie Shores, Bacon Road, Township Bar area.
But, I don't know, if the, if the truck's loaded there, how long does it take to get out to Perry to dump and come back, I mean, that's my only thought that.
Because they go all the way out to Perry Village, somewhere in Perry Village and dump.
I, if we could, well, if we could dump right at the nursery.
Yeah.
I mean, you might have an hour downtime that day, but you're gonna save a couple hours the following week.
Big shredders, shoots it out into our woods, behind the road department.
We'll try to find one of those?
You know?
Yeah.
Seriously, just dump it and just shreds it, just shoots it way out into the woods behind our road department.
Well, people come and pick it up, they, once it's shredded, people get down for compost.
Yeah. I was talking to leaves.
Yeah, they'll take it, too, that's my thought, that we would want to try to truck it somewhere to dump it, I mean. And maybe we start over on this side.
That's what we usually do.
And with, with two trucks even, and get this side done, dump it local, move over to the other side and then see where.
Yeah, I mean, could you do that instead of one and one, get everybody loading and?
Usually what we do is start on the west side with the whole.
The whole shebang?
The whole shebang.
So if you have two garbage trucks for the east side, couldn't you, how long does it take you to fill versus, how long does it take you to fill a truck?
It all, it all depends, you know, we did the Hills, Heatherstone, and all Madison Avenue, took three and a half hours.
So what I'm getting at is?
Then we went into Cedar Glen and Park Road, and that took an hour and a half, and we, we filled the truck up again.
So either way, if you're filling one and they're running for an hour, that gives you enough time to fill the other one, by the time he gets back, that one's fully let go, and then you're just constantly.
Well, we don't, we're all working separate, though, he'd be in a completely different area.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, let's go with three and get it all.
That's what I was saying.
Just get it done in one day, just get it done in one day, you don't have the crap blowing all over the place, another frickin' windstorm, if it's snowing, if we have snow issues, then we're screwed again.
And then we don't have to do double work back, for twelve hundred bucks and be done.
Twelve hundred bucks, so then we're not, we're not hauling in our own trucks, right?
Nope, we won't be hauling in our own trucks and.
There's always one going, so you're always gonna be coming back, and they're talking, I'm sure, on the radios, they know what's going on, show up there, right?
Yeah.
I think that's the way to go.
And they're dumping out at a nursery.
Dump at a nursery.
Done, and that way they're not tied up for three days, you know?
I can get behind it if we're dumping straight out of nursery.
Yeah, that's my point.
And we're not running our own trucks, running our own fuel, wearing tear.
Right.
And I can check with clients right there on eighty-four.
Okay.
Because I know they take leaves.
Okay, that's right, somewhere closer.
Yeah, that's a lot closer.
Yeah, okay.
Or, you know, even if they'll take one load or some, I mean, anything.
Okay.
That way you're done, and we don't have to spend three days, you guys, I mean, that's not easy labor, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, those are coming in during the week, too.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, anything else, John?
That's it.
Done, really? Good?
All right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do they start over at station two, renovation stuff?
They're supposed to start Monday, but they got delayed, it'll be Wednesday.
Okay.
Rich, did you want to start?
The big hole? Hey, hey.
Richard, do you want to start?
No, that's okay, Harley can.
So I had a meeting with our Smart Gov private manager, Steven George, on the night. Um, we discussed the errors that were made, um, and the cost to the township taxpayers for Rich and I to repeat work that we had previously completed. Um, Steven George was understanding, he agreed that it was an issue, he initially offered to refund the cost of two custom reports that we ordered. Um, and I thanked him for his understanding, I let him know that, you know, we might feel more comfortable or more closer to an approximate of Rich and I's wage, Rich and I's wages. Um, in an estimated timeframe that it would take us to repeat the work that's already been completed. Um, so he did offer a third custom report, um, you know, cost which Rich and I, uh, is a good value, and we're looking at a total value of about twelve hundred dollars um, that's being reimbursed for the error made, and they've already corrected the errors as of Wednesday of last week. So we're back on the schedule.
Thank you, and thank you for not taking the first, you know, the two custom reports and asking to get in the third, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And that is all I have on that.
All I have to say about that. Okay, what next?
I, I don't have anything for you, you guys, but I figure I might as well stand up here just in case something comes from Rich that requires.
Well, so before we go to Rich, um, you guys sent off an interesting, in your report, an interesting graph, want to just look at it, and it was, that was very nice, I appreciated that.
Chuck likes graphs.
I like graphs, I like data.
Chuck likes colors.
You guys do all that fluffy, pretty stuff that people love, I look at numbers, I'm sorry. I just kind of hang in the background, these conversations go back and forth. All right, so, um, I mean, it's interesting to see the zoning permits this year were way up, I guess that means the economy's done well. Uh, anyhow, so what do you, I'll just turn it over to you guys, you've seen the graph, uh, whether it's you or Rich, would you guys want to talk and share about it?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a graph that I'm trying to maintain for the trustees while we're waiting for Smart Gov to come in, but it also shows um, the increase in our workloads since I was initially hired.
Yeah, so I saw, when did you get hired? Wait, we're on this. Was your first year?
Yes, two thousand sixteen is when Lori came in, was helping for that.
Okay.
That Josh foreshadowed my re-charge, do you remember that day? I'll never forget it, he was like, oh, well, let me know if you got, or, let us know if you're coming back.
You remember that day?
Yeah.
When did you come back?
Uh, two thousand seventeen.
So you only gone for a year, then?
Yeah.
That was it, Lori, you only had that job for a year?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
I missed you guys too much.
Thank you, we missed you, too, we're glad you're back.
So, but yeah, the first year of Rich and I working together, or the addition of this position was in two thousand fifteen.
When did we get elected, was it fourteen?
Fourteen.
Our January first of fourteen?
Your, your terms started January first of, yeah.
So I know that was a big thing, once we got involved, or once we got hired, was hiring someone, and which was you, to address all the violations, uh, and it looks like they've they've been addressed, because it started off at eighty-four, so that number was probably similar, I would assume, for fourteen.
The violations, it dipped, but boy, the zoning permits, and that is new construction, too, right, and the zoning permits?
That includes new construction.
So, I mean, that really.
Well, there you go, that's because of Meadows.
Fairway Meadows, Fairway Pines, Calley, Asbury Point.
Yeah.
The stuff off Richmond, those.
Oh, yeah.
Townhomes. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so we, yeah, added a lot of homes and streets in the township in the past, even past four, three years.
Hey, so on these new constructions, like at the Meadows at Fairway Pines, um, how much of involvement, Rich, whether this goes to you or goes to Harley, but how much of involvement do we have with their, with their permits for the buildings, for the houses, and, and what they do?
Well, quite a bit, um, we're issuing permits for all the new dwellings. Um, and, and any improvements the homeowners want to add after they, they move into their dwellings?
So, I know when my development was built, and I'm assuming this one's the same thing, it's a township, but do, does, who gets in there after and looks at like the grading permits or the grading that was done properly? Does that happen at all, that's a county function, isn't it?
That is a county function, yes.
Do you know if it gets done?
Um, I, I, I do believe it does, especially if there are questionable things.
So what are the problems, let me interrupt you, Rich, but one of the problems that we had in my development was, um, especially on the street I live on, is, um, the, the drainage where it went in. Um, initially, it was supposed to be a developer, and then they changed it to the individual property owners, and it turns out, years later, we find out that the drainage wasn't installed properly because the individual builders didn't follow the plans properly, they might have an easement, they might have a drainage pipe on the wrong side of the house, or totally missed it. And then, so now the HOA encounters these problems as time goes on, um, so that's why I asked that question, does the county have to, um, show validation that they actually inspected those properties, or how does that work, do you know?
They, um, I believe that they will take the word of a registered surveyor, who, who provides them a survey as built, uh, af- after the dwelling, uh, is, is complete.
Okay, so that does happen, and I mean, the surveyors are registered, that's their job, okay.
Right.
Good to know, that's good to know, thank you. All right, go ahead, continue on this, I interrupted.
Oh, uh, you know, Mr. Jim, I was just stating that it just shows the, the growth in our, our workload, um, since two thousand fifteen. Uh, and a, a majority of my work that I do for the township isn't violations, but, uh, zoning permit applications. Rich specializes in the more complicated zoning text amendments, um, or site plan reviews, they take a significant amount of time to process. And so, and, and Rich can speak to this, a lot of his time is focused on more complicated zoning issues, and so, the zoning permit, we share, um. So, so I'm not just doing violations, I'm, I'm, I've done.
Do you predominantly handle the violations, though, that is your, your role, right?
I do predominantly handle them, yes.
Okay, and Rich would just fill in as necessary, I assume, is that correct statement?
Yes, unless he's approached specifically by a resident who's used to work with Rich, um, they will seek him out specifically.
All right, well, I appreciate, I know we don't run around looking at people's yards and houses and look for problems, but, uh, when the complaints come in, and they do come in, and we need someone to follow up on it, uh, even after its initial complaint, okay, I'm good. But that was a very nice, interesting graph, I appreciate that, thank you. That came out of your software?
No.
You just winged this thing?
Yes.
Impressive, all right. Josh, you got anything? Gabe? All right, so let's move on, so, um, you got anything else there, Harley, you want to share?
No.
All right, so Rich, we're gonna turn it over to you, what do you got, buddy?
Okay, uh, just want to talk a little bit, the text amendment you were receiving today is, uh, the, the one that you asked us to initiate, which adds the indoor climate-controlled self-storage units as a permitted, conditionally permitted use in the B-one zoning district. Um, it's been modified slightly based on comments by the Planning Commission, other than that, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, lists some new conditions for a new use category, and, and that is that, so you're, you're receiving that today. It's got to be set for a public hearing date, uh, for, within thirty days, so that leaves either of the December meetings, um, either the first or the fifteenth, for you to set as a date for the public hearing on this matter.
Does either of the dates affect the, um, business that's, um, wanting to move into that location?
No, this just changes the manner in which it is legitimized. It becomes a permitted conditional use instead of a similar use, permitted use or conditional use, which is, it's just a better way of legitimizing that particular business at that particular location.
And in both cases, this will give the township more leeway in working on things that we want to work with them. For example, a fence in the back or landscaping in the back between the properties.
Oh, that's already set. Those are already set in stone. Yeah.
All right. Guys, when do you want to schedule? Does it matter which one? Do you have the 1st or the 15th?
First is the evening meeting. Yeah, that's fine. Want to tune in? Yeah.
All right, so we're going to schedule that for the 15th.
The 15th?
I'm sorry, the 1st. The 1st. I just, yeah, he said the first meeting and I said the 15th.
Okay.
We're going to go December 1st. Go with that. I bet.
Okay. Okay, then the other thing, I'd like to just kind of give you an update on the situation over on Hawthorne. We are now aware that the Dan Rich LLC, who owns the property, has the five tenants in there. Apparently, they're all out-of-town students at Lake Erie College, all members of the baseball team. However, according to our zoning, only four people can be considered a single unrelated person household unit. So they will be applying for a variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow five instead of four. That will be subject to a public hearing. However, because there are five tenants on the property and they are all driving adults in all-owned vehicles, there's a parking problem on the property. And this is where we've had, you know, they're young college guys. They have fellow teammate baseball players. They invite them over. They drink a little beer, watch some football games, whatever, have parties. All their guests have been parking all over the street, in the road right of way, on the front lawn, and without asking permission have been using the Crime Lab's parking lot on occasion. So we have some parking issues to work out. The owner of the property is discussing with their legal representatives what their best decision-making process is to expand. Their existing driveway is part concrete, part gravel. We believe that the gravel has been there since the property was built back in 1976 or so, maybe even earlier than that. So they're allowed a small expansion, 10% expansion of the non-conforming gravel. Now, they have a choice of asking the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance or expanding their driveway and getting rid of all the gravel and putting in new driveway and expanding it with concrete so that they're all concrete. Or they could choose to expand the gravel with pervious pavement, according to our zoning code. They are probably going to try to expand with pervious pavement. I think, though, in order for the Board of Zoning Appeals to make a proper decision on allowing more individuals to reside on the property than what our zoning currently allows, they have to, they will be taking into account the fact that the problem came to a head and we realized what was going on because of the parking situation. So we've got to have some assurances that our township parking regulations will not continue to be violated. I do know that the rental agent for the property owner is attempting to contact Chuck Colson to get permission to use the Crime Lab parking lot on occasion. I think they also contacted Church of the Brethren, which is a little bit further down on Buckeye at the intersection of Coal Ridge in Concord Township. But, you know, right now, the good news is that between the property owner, the rental agent, and the tenants, they're making some attempts to get in line with our zoning requirements. And actually, I haven't received any further real meaningful complaints about a parking situation since the last trustee meeting. So I think that's a good sign. It's not a done deal yet. We're still waiting for the rental agent to get back to us to let us know how they believe they want to rectify the parking situation going into the future. But they are, I'm sure they will be moving forward to ask the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow five people in the house instead of four.
So...
So that's the update on that situation as of the moment.
Okay. So let me just add, now, I know you said you haven't heard any complaints. I was getting daily phone calls and texts and emails from the one resident. I asked her to just hold off and give us a chance to let this play out. So I think that's why you haven't received any complaints, not because, I'm not going to say not because, but I'm not convinced it's because of a change of behavior. So I just want to throw that out. I'm not in favor at all of turning this into a conditional use for five, and if I need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that, I will. That just opens up a floodgates throughout the township. And with the college nearby, I don't want our township turned into a frat house, especially older neighborhoods where properties are easier for people to buy for investment properties and then just utilize them for that behavior or for that, I'm sorry, for that financial purpose. As far as the, also, you mentioned the driveway, Rich, where it's 30, 40 years old now, 45 years old, it sounds like. And they want to, they want to say that that stone there allows them to put other stone down. I'm not interested in making it easy for them to do that, but legally, we got to do what we have to do. So if there's any way that we could force their hand to get concrete put down and to widen that driveway and extend that driveway however we can, I'm all in favor of that. I'm not interested at all in helping this become a new location for frat houses to be built and temporary housing for college students in the middle of our neighborhood where you have hardworking folks coming in there and trying to raise their families and pay their bills, only to come home to college kids. And I say all this because my kids are recently out of college and I've seen those neighborhoods at Ohio University and at Bowling Green. And I have no desire at all to accept that, to tolerate that, or to help support it in any way other than supporting the legalities of our zoning resolutions and making sure that we don't cross any lines. So that's my starting and my ending point. And if I need to make a visit, I'll ask my legal counsel. I know that the Zoning Board of Appeals is a separate entity and we're not really allowed to influence them. But as a private citizen or as a trustee, I'd like to go and, or at least send a letter. And if the other trustees wanted to send something on that, if they were in agreement. I don't want to cross any lines legally or put ourselves in any questionable positions, but as I said, this is a bad situation, which is only going to get worse if more houses are purchased, turned into frat houses.
Yeah, on the same token, if BZA rules in favor of this, let's say, doesn't that then create a precedence that realistically anybody would have a legal standing then to come in front of them with the same argument? And, you know, we want five people living in this house.
And then why not six? I mean, why five?
What I'm getting at is, if we, if BZA approves in a residential neighborhood, no special circumstances, just a house in a residential neighborhood gives them a variance on that, five, wouldn't you then be opening yourself up to now anybody else that comes with that same request would have legal standing to say, well, you gave it to them, the circumstances aren't any different, and then essentially be open to...
BZA's decisions aren't precedent as in like a court's decision would be?
Yeah.
You can't cite to it and say, because you had the same set of facts here, you ruled this way, you have to rule this way this time. It's certainly, I mean, if I were the attorney representing somebody and I knew of that, I certainly would be bringing it to their attention.
And not only that...
I just want to clarify a few things surrounding this specific use variance request. The applicant is applying for a temporary use variance to expire at the end of the lease, which will be this summer, because they're college students, their lease will be ending in the summer. The hardship that they're citing isn't on behalf of the property owner, but on behalf of the tenants. And the way that they are wording their hardship in this specific instance, just to sort of alleviate any concern about future situations similar, is that due to COVID, they had an additional roommate move in because they weren't able to work as many hours this year due to, you know, restaurants and things closing. So in order to afford rent, they had an additional roommate move in. They were unaware of our requirements. All of them live four-plus hours away from Lake Erie College and moving in the middle of the pandemic into another home with...
So I get all that, and none of those are acceptable. Their lack of understanding of what the local zoning laws are is not an acceptable reason for a variance, in my opinion. My son was in college and something happened in the place he moved in, and by Friday, they were all told they had to change something and they all had to deal with it. And that became their problem, not the local community's problem, not the building owner's problem. So in this case here, I think I've been very clear as to where I stand. I don't see any variance whatsoever. I'm understanding these are college kids. I get it. My kids were just in college. I get it. And these guys were in college and Josh was away at college. So there's a lot of difficulties that come into play, but you were just in college a couple of years ago, right? But anyhow...
Twenty years.
Anyhow, they've got to comply in my position, end of story. And the problem that's created is a created, what's the word? There's a created...
They brought this upon themselves.
Yeah, but there's a legal term for that. You can't, on a variance, a hardship. So they created the hardship. The hardship wasn't imposed by the township. So by them including a fifth person and then signing a lease, I feel bad for these college guys, but now that's up to the landowner, property owner, to make right. It's not upon the township. So they can apply to the township to seek relief, and that's their legal right. But when they come to the township, I don't want to see us, personally, I'm not going to support that. And then if the, let me ask you this, Jason. Let's say that the, let's say that the Board of Zoning Appeals grants them the variance. I know in the past, when I was in another community, the city where I lived at, if they didn't agree, because I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, if they didn't agree with our position, the city actually could sue the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if the Board of Zoning Appeals were to approve this, would the township trustees then have the authority to sue them, to sue that verdict and take it to court and challenge it in court?
Sue, I don't know if it's the right word, but yeah, you can, anybody can appeal their decision to common pleas court, yes.
Okay.
But I will say too, it's a pretty deferential standard that common pleas court uses. It's an administrative decision. Essentially, they're looking at arbitrariness. Is there some kind of rationale for the decision? So generally gets up there. Any citizen or resident, I should say, of the township. Not 100% that the city could itself. I don't see why not. I could look into that, but I know any resident can appeal that decision.
Well, I would look at it from the township standpoint, if the township disagreed, if it were to go forward. But regardless, hopefully, it could stop that from that point happening. Then I think I've made it pretty clear. I'm not going to speak anymore. I'll turn to Josh and Gabe.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, a lot of things I was going to talk about, but I feel for the tenants, I think the property owner even, but extending this non-compliance through the end of their lease, there is a detriment to the community and the neighbors in that area. So like Chuck said, I don't know that I would support a variance because there is a cost to those neighbors that the landlord is making a financial gain by having the people there that we shouldn't impose any hardships on our own residents, so. And then a lot of the other things, same things you said.
Is there a zoning violation on that driveway currently?
On the driveway itself, no, Mr. Chairman. However, their parking situation as they continue to park on the grass is a zoning violation.
Are we issuing?
I'm honestly not sure Rich has been handling this violation case.
Can we just start issuing violations?
A violation in the parking yet?
No, we have advised them of what the violations are or have been.
We following our 14-day rule? Where are we on the process?
Well, the process is, we sent a letter, and I have not personally observed at this point in time since the letter was sent, any violation.
Okay. As soon as we do, we start stacking them up. That's the way they're going to change behavior. I mean, we can ask all we want, and they're going to say, well, we can't because we have four, five people living here and we don't have anywhere else to go. Again, that's not our problem. We need to enforce our regulations and we need to share.
So, Rich, can you put that on your agenda to do a follow-up since you sent the letter and see where they're at? Our last meeting was when? Not last week, but the one before. Was that two weeks? All right, so tomorrow is your 14th day. So if you would inspect it tomorrow and check out the parking and see if they're in compliance? Or I don't care who does it, it's the office.
No, I could absolutely do that.
I would think based on school during the day is probably not the best time to check, though. Because they're probably going to be at school.
It's probably...
Evening time is probably your best bet if you're really looking to check, you know, because middle of the day, they're probably in class.
I think at least a couple of them also are employed, at least on a part-time basis.
But you probably have a better chance in the evening after school to find out the real situation versus when they're in class. I don't know if they're out for Thanksgiving break now. So that might, you know, these guys might be going home for a couple of weeks too. So that might, you might be finding an empty house right now, you know?
Right.
Because are they, what's Lake, do we know Lake Erie's situation? Are they doing what a lot are doing? Tell them to stay away until after the first of the year? We don't know that, okay. I'm just curious. So they're going to go home and be gone for, you know, or they're coming back or what the situation is, but I think it's going to be tough, middle of the day, right now, you go, they're probably in class. So just, you know, your timing, you live in the neighborhood. If you're out and about going to the store or out to eat or something like that, you know?
Right.
Take a ride through, and I will as well because I'm in the neighborhood as well. So if I'm out in the evening, I'll take a look.
Not supporting their appeal?
We can do that, right?
Honestly, I would have to look into that. I only I only hesitate because I know you guys appoint them to those positions. I don't know. Now, maybe you can couch it as we're just writing as...
So instead of trustees, you just be as concerned residents?
But...
Can we, yeah.
But I'd have to look into that one, but I can't.
All right. While you're looking into it, what if, what if I were to attend and speak? Can I say as a resident or can I say as a trustee?
Once again, I'd have to look into, like I said, the only reason I hesitate is because I know the trustees appoint the BZA members. So I don't know if there's a conflict there.
But I would, yeah, checking it. Because I think necessarily becoming an elected trustee wouldn't, and again, you're going to have to check on this, but I I would think that becoming an elected trustee would negate your standing as a resident in the community, you know what I mean? So if we approach it that way, so maybe you see if we approach it as a resident, that keeps us out of that pickle that you're worried about, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Working magic. Thank you.
Can we also ask the neighborhood maybe to their feedback? The more, the more people in the neighborhood that speak against, the more the BZA...
Well, that's what I was going to get at, or... Well, that's what I was going to get at. Are we, what are we doing as far as notification in the neighborhood?
They're getting the standard, well, we haven't sent them out yet, so we still have time, but our standard is to send it to the contiguous property. So everybody who touches the property line.
Would it be, is it?
So only the two houses?
Across the street, behind them, and inside the...
Is there an issue with us expanding our footprint that we send the letters? Does that create any type of issue if we send it to, you know, multiple people in the neighborhood?
I mean, I'd be hesitant because that's not what we've done in the past.
Okay.
Let them wing it. I mean, not wing it, let them pass the word, yeah.
But certainly, the people who read those letters have nothing to be...
Talking to their neighbors.
Hey, the hearing is this day. Would you mind hearing and speaking against the report?
Okay.
Yeah, I can't see anybody.
Okay. Anything else? Richard, do you have anything else to share with us?
No, that's it, sir.
Okay, wow, we're finishing early today. Is there anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, while we're on the subject of letters, I would, I wanted to ask that us three could send a letter of support to our businesses in the township that have experienced large hardships based on the first shutdown, that a nicely, you know, very nice worded letter, letter to the governor, just asking that, expressing our concern that the first time what it had done to our businesses in the township, and that we ask that he seriously considers, based on the restrictions he's put on businesses, and if you go to these businesses, they're all following his, you know, plastic shields, masks, and they're, they're all adhering to his regulations that he put out, that based on that, we ask that he strongly consider not issuing another shutdown for our businesses.
So what do you want to do? You want to?
I'll come up, I'll come up with something nicely worded, very delicate, obviously, but graciously asking him that he strongly consider not doing that again because of...
So is that something for us to send, but the cities also, the businesses also?
I'm, not just us as a board, and I've also been in contact with other community leaders that are, you know, working on similar things.
Well, if something comes from the Lake County Township Association as opposed to just...
Well, I think we need to address it in our township. We have businesses that...
Something from us, too.
I spoke to businesses that, in our township, that said if it happens again, they're, they cannot weather another storm, that they will not open back up. And I think that that needs to be expressed, the direct impact that'll have in our community for our business owners and our residents, who also work at restaurants that aren't in our township, or bars that aren't in our township, that if they're closed again, they're going to experience a very big hardship in their lives based on that. And these mandates for regulations were put in place, and they're all following it. We have, we don't have the health, health departments not issuing citations to our restaurants for not following the mandates. So I would just like to, I'll come up with something, and if you guys are in favor of what I come up with, that we all sign it and send it off.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it'd be more powerful coming from a...
Well, we can address it, but I, well, I think both will work.
One bureaucracy is doing both. So send ours, and then get them on board.
And I'll talk to them and see if we can get one together, if they're collectively, but I know, you know, power's in numbers, so the more that you get, the more expression of this concern will hopefully have some impact. May fall on deaf ears, but it's worth a shot, and I think that we need to take a step to stand up for our businesses and our community. That are following the rules.
You're going to word it that way, that there's several, because, I mean, really, the ones that aren't following the rules need to be, you know...
From my understanding, we're not... Yeah, I don't care about them.
They, I mean, things like that.
I mean, I care about them, but I'm worried about our community.
If you're not following the rules, then you need to be punished.
That's a different story.
If you're following the rules, you should be able to stay open. I'm on board with that.
That's my point.
So you hammer that message home.
And you walk into Compadres, you walk into Red Creek, you see, they got the plastic dividers, the tables are separated. They're following all, making people wear masks, they're following all of these things. And yet, you know, he's on TV stating, we don't have a spread from our restaurants and bars, it's from personal gatherings. And then, well, we might shut stuff down again. So my point is, is just give some support to our business.
Shut down those gyms, I'm okay.
If you hammer the point of, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Same, same thing, okay. Yeah, my point is broad. The businesses, they're following your mandates. We don't need any...
All right, so I'm going to close this meeting at 10:58, and then Sean, we'll be ready to open back up here in a few minutes, whenever you come back on. Thank you. I'm going to hit the king and man. Yes, done.